First of all, I apologize to my colleagues. We had Asa Bet's budget hearing over there with the FinCon. Open session public meetings are subject to being videotaped and I see that we are the open. Your image and voice may be recorded. And with that, I'll open our hearing.
Hi.
Hi.
We're back. We're here to ask for an extension. We were emailed and were told that we would come before the board to ask for an extension. At the last meeting, we were tasked to get a new site plot plan. And so, we started that process. But our engineer did not get it done in time due to death in the family prior to the conservation meeting, which was last week. We got the plan yesterday, so we do have it for you. But it hasn't been certified by conservation. So the next opportunity that we'll have to-
Is just before our next meeting?
Correct. So, the timing is a little less than ideal, but-
I just would suggest to you, we'll see the board's feelings on the extension. And I'll tell the board that we communicated.
Yep.
And I was very definite that I could not make the decision-
Correct.
But this was an option.
Yep.
The only concern I would have, are you sure you'll be ready for next month?
I think so. I mean, we have the plan and I guess what I would ask maybe to make use of our time tonight is maybe to ask you to look at it and see if there's any suggestions. And then we'll go, we can have our engineer do something. And then we can, we have already a scheduled meeting time for March 6th, I believe.
How does the board feel about that?
I would think that could all bear on the conservation.
Yeah, I think-
We met with conservation on the old plan, the weekend. Like after we met here, it was like a Saturday, we came here and we met with her. And so she gave us some feedback on what we should do. And then we had a plan drawn up, but it obviously wasn't done in time.
One of the other things I asked you for in the note was evidence of the registered gross weight of any vehicle that you're going to have.
Yep.
Do you have that evidence for us?
Yep.
Because, see, we have to go on the registered gross weight.
Yep.
Because if there's anything in the truck, it weighs more than just the truck itself does. So it's not, you're not showing us the weight of the truck, right?
No, it's what it's registered for.
You're showing us what it's registered for.
Yep.
She follows the guidelines very well.
I'm trying to learn. Do you each want a copy?
Yeah, I would like one of those.
These are the two pickups. So one of them's a-
Yeah. One's personal, one's a-
Sure.
Thank you.
You know more about that than I do. So you were asking for two vehicles before we talked about one?
Well, he has two. One is his personal truck, which we passed through the registration.
Does it have signage on the side of the truck?
Yes, we have to because they have commercial plates.
Right, but I mean, that would make it part of the business, so I think you're wise to do that.
Yes, it does have-
Do you want a clear copy?
Please. So this is as of right now, the finished copy, correct?
Yes.
It is.
Have you shown any wetlands here or is that what conservation is doing?
Nope, there aren't.
Okay, so where are the wetlands here?
This is wetland over here.
Okay.
And then this dotted line-
Yep.
Is, this is the 100-foot buffer. And then this goes 100 feet to the river edge. And then this is the 200-foot river buffer to the edge. It was drawn to the edge even though last time she said to the center of the river, so.
The line's going up here, but it's far as by.
Yep, the 100-foot buffer, yeah. For the, for the, how would you call it? Wetlands, please.
And who are your rebutters on either side here? I mean, on this side is the housing project, right?
No, that's across the road.
It's across the road, okay.
So this is the wheelers. Now I think seals, sand pit. This is a piece of property that we wanted to deposit down on.
And this property here-
That's Casselli's old property.
And you said you have a-
Deposit down on.
Deposit down on.
So the technical rebutter, I guess, on that side would be the gravel pit. And then the solar farm is pretty much directly across the street from our house.
Okay, any signage and types of things we're looking for is signage, lighting? Buffers? You're not going to have a sign announcing?
No.
Okay, so you don't want any signs?
No signs.
We don't want anyone to know where we're going.
No. Well, they'll know from, they read the side of the truck. Is there any natural buffering with your neighbors? I see asterisk-looking things down the end there.
From our house, if you were to look out the front, you can't actually see the road because this is probably the same height as like the top of our roof of our house. And seeing over here, that's like the roof. So the only actual part you can see is like right here. You can see part of our house. And then right here, where they put in the utility lines to come to our house, we had to clear originally trees here, you know, just so they could excavate. But there's since probably 20 maple trees planted here.
Okay, and where are you going to park vehicles and?
They're below the grade of the house.
Okay, so you're going to have a long driveway going in and out?
And we talked to conservation and she asked us if we were going to pave it because that would change what they would ask us to do on the sides. And we said it's a really long driveway to pave. Chances are it's going to be dirt.
Yeah, they want to make sure that it isn't impervious, you know?
Yeah, no, that's what she, we talked about.
The proposed barn, have you applied for a permit for that barn?
Not until we've gone through this process.
Okay, so if we were to agree to it, you would understand that it would be subject to whatever the building inspector says about. And again, you might want to run it by him. Because if it changes location on the plan, you would have to come back. So you might want to firm that up a little bit before you-
Before the next meeting.
Yeah, anybody?
Is the Board of Health, then, looks like you're going to put a force main up to your original system?
Yes, so when I designed it, the house, we designed everything with the Board of Health. Yes, Bill Brookings knows about it.
And it was originally approved, but I think at the last meeting you said every three years.
That may be a little piece of paper you may want to bring in for the next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
From Bill Brookings?
Yes, it's an approved-
Septic for the number of bedrooms.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So I come back to my original question. Now, we've continued you once and this will be twice. Do you want to go for March and do you think you'd be ready? And/or do you, would you prefer April?
Yeah, I don't want to do March.
Do you want to do March?
Well, I know you want to do March, but I think, you know, personally, I would be unhappy if something happens and you aren't ready to do March.
Other than concern, so I guess my question would be, that's a good question. So if we go to the conservation committee with like, let's say, this plan on March 6th, do we need it redrawn within the week or do you just take their notes on it?
Well, in other words, if they change something?
Yep.
If they make you move the proposed barn or something like that? And if it's after, I mean, you would have to have the plans ready for us when you come in because we would be approving where it would be.
Yep.
And I would also touch base with the building inspector if you're proposing a barn because when you put the location down there, that's going to be it unless you come back and get an updated plan. And I'm sure you don't want to go through that again.
We're going to need to sign the plans as well?
We don't need to sign the plans, we need to reference them. We haven't signed them in the past because they don't usually. But that's a good idea, we could. Yeah.
Do you need the Board of Health after the commission? The conservation commission goes up, does the Board of Health-
When your guy redoes this?
Yeah.
Or finishes up? If you could just put a signature block up in the corner somewhere, unobtrusive.
The other play that we gave to you guys a long time ago, had that. But I guess conservation wants a plan like that.
And it protects you too?
Yeah.
You know, because you've got to sign plans. Anybody have anything that they?
Well, I think we want to see something from the Board of Health saying that they know what that proposed septic is playing a foreign barn. And, I mean, it's a tank and obviously you're going to have to have a pump because you're going to kill.
Yes.
I think we would, I think we want to see something from them.
Yes.
They also have, if you look at, the well goes to the house and the well line goes to the barn. So they're going to use the same, same water source.
Can you do that?
Yes.
I didn't hear it.
Well, you can as long as the Board of Health is happy.
Our house, in our barn.
So I think given the stuff that's there, I think you're right, Sue, that we should ask you to give the plan and meet with the, and tell them what your plans are and make sure they're in agreement. Because again, you don't want to have something happen later on and find out, gee, I got to put the barn down way down front because they won't allow that longer pipe.
Right. No, because when I built the, when we built the house, I designed the system with everything, with the barn and Bureau approved it.
If you could just get him to send us a note or give you a note that you can bring to us, either way, something written from him.
And that's something worth mentioning with conservation too. You may not have minutes at their meeting or whatever, but a note from them saying that they approved it at the meeting would be fine. You know, the night you go there and they say, this is great and we-
So you don't want them to sign it? Just a signed piece of paper stating?
We'll sign it.
You'll sign it?
We'll sign it.
Okay.
But we need something from them saying they approved of the plan dated whatever, okay? Anybody else?
No, I just want to, you should check on that well thing because I know at my place, I had to go from the well to the house, then to the barn. I couldn't go even though the barn is right next to my well. You can't go.
You can't have two outtakes, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think you can do that. So you, you should check on that.
Got to check into it.
Yeah.
I think he did approve that.
Anybody else?
We have a filtration system for inside the house. So when it pumps into the house, it goes through the filtration system, then it goes to the, into the barn too.
I would ask-
I'll ask him.
Yeah.
Just have him.
Yeah, I just, I don't think it can come directly from the well to the barn. I think you have to go through the house first.
Yes, it goes through the house.
Okay. Yeah, well, no, yeah, it goes up and then it goes back, right?
I would just suggest you might want to put some notes on the side. The notes might be that the paving of the driveway, I mean, it's things that we would have to write on it afterwards and they do a much better job and much better. That the driveway from whatever to whatever will be unpaved or will be pervious.
Lynn, do you want a note on there indicating where the vehicles are going to be parked?
I think that that would, the fact that they say all vehicles will be parked near the proposed barn, something to that effect would be a good idea, just to clarify.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want nothing up on my desk.
How many feet is the house to the barn?
Well, going from the existing house all the way to the back is 371 feet. So I would say it's a couple hundred feet.
There's a scale here.
Eighty, 160.
Yeah, she has-
All right, well, that's the right there. So maybe 120?
This is 185 from the barn to the lot line to 150 to the barn to the house.
Is there a requirement or concern?
Okay, being that, is there anyone in the audience that has anything they'd like to add? If not, being that you're going to extend our, the petitioner is requesting an extension until our March meeting, is that your wish?
March meeting is what, two weeks, three weeks?
Is four weeks. Our March meeting would be the second Wednesday of next month.
The 13th.
It's the 13th and you'll be meeting with conservation on the 6th. And that would mean any changes to the plan they make would have to be made before you come to us.
Conservation's the 6th?
I think that's what you said in your note, right?
Yeah, it's like the week before this meeting, so yes.
And you, you want to do that? Because we might be reluctant to extend you again. And you should bring a note from conservation because I'm sure they won't have anything drawn up, okay? Would someone care to make a motion that we continue the hearing? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Now, do you, do you like the plantings? Is that okay?
I don't.
Oh.
I mean, I don't have any druthers about the plantings. What I would like is for, maybe if any of the neighbors had input. And did you talk to the neighbors about any input?
We've talked to our neighbors, I mean-
They seem pretty supportive.
Yeah.
So you might want to run it by them and just mention at the hearing that you had run it by them. I mean, if they're here and they complain, then obviously we'll take it into consideration. Would someone like to make a motion at the request of the petitioner that we continue the hearing until March 13th? At what time? We don't have anything yet scheduled for March, do we?
No.
Do you like 7 o'clock?
So moved.
Seconded.
You got it moved and seconded, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? That's a unanimous vote, we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Would you give that to Leanne, please?
Do you want? You can keep it. Thank you. No, I'll get anyone.
Leanne doesn't let me keep anything.
I wonder why I would get lost.
That's exactly why.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll see you next week, next month. How about minutes, I guess is next. I will.
I move that we accept the minutes from January-
January 9th.
January 9th, I mean, by the time it's written.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Those abstaining because they weren't here, I think everybody here was here, weren't we?
On Monday?
I was not here. I was not here.
Oh, you weren't?
Yes.
Okay, then you can vote present.
Yeah.
Okay.
I move that we accept the town meeting report, the town has written.
Everybody have a chance to look at it?
I didn't.
Is it okay?
Yeah, yeah, hold on a second.
All those in favor, aye? All those opposed? I'll take that as a unanimous vote. Could you, could I trouble you to send it to the town report thing, into Ally, please?
Yep.
Okay. Sign warrants, we don't have any warrants we need to sign, do we? Okay. I just wanted to bring up, did you want to speak with us tonight?
Yeah, if I could.
Okay, let's, I have some things for the folks, but let's not keep you waiting. Why don't you come forward, please?
Explains the situation.
I think I've been reading it through the, on the, on the computer.
So in 2004, 2005, you guys did a development with Alden Kane and McCarty on Alden Drive, Whitney Estates. And part of, in that first-
Could you just identify yourself to Leanne?
Oh, I'm Rebecca McDonald. I'm a 40B unit owner at Whitney Estates on Alden Drive. That first package that stapled together, if you look at the very last page of it, that's the provision we're going to be discussing. It's in a chart that looks like this.
Well, I guess maybe you could state your purpose for being here. Are you looking for us to do something?
Yes.
Do you need a hearing or?
An amendment to the permit because the eligibility letter that the DHCD provided to the town had a stipulation, which is this provision. This packet is the eligibility letter. And this provision on the last page states that the affordable units will pay a reduced condo fee based on deed restrictions. And the eligibility letter gives the town and the developer the approval to move forward to the comprehensive permit. So when it got to the comprehensive permit, the condo provision wasn't entered into the permit, so it was overlooked. And if you look, let's see. On the sixth page, it will say homeownership. And it states that the household earning 7% of the area median income would not be expected to pay more than 30% of the income for the cost of purchasing the housing, blah, blah, blah.
Okay, could I just?
That is where the 70%-
This is part of what? This is not part of the comprehensive permit? This is part of your rules and regulations?
What exactly is part?
Well, you're saying that-
The provision right there?
Yes.
That provision is part of the eligibility letter that allowed the town and the developer to develop the comprehensive permit.
Okay.
And all of the items in that letter needed to be accounted for in the permit. And it's missing that item. And I was getting at the point that the reason that the percentage that the affordable units pay is not more than 70% of the affordable, of the market rate rather, condo fee, that percentage comes from the language. And this, all this paperwork is from the DHCD's comprehensive permit guide. So the language on the sixth page and homeownership and that's how they got the 70% number of the condo fee. And then there's two possibilities here because they, the condo has, when I sent them the provision in the eligibility letter, said it was allegedly from the DHCD and irrelevant. So they're having a meeting for their lawyer to tell the whole development that this is a big mistake and it opens up the 40B unit owners to liability of paying back condo fees for the past 15 years of the reduced rate, which obviously was not the intent, seeing as it's intended to bring up a reduced rate.
So are you looking for us to?
Amend the permit and put the provision in and re-report it so that it will be enforceable. Or the other option would be, I don't know how either option, so either of these options go, like how the logistics happen and how, what takes place. But the other option would be working with the DHCD and releasing the deed restrictions to my unit and making it a full market rate unit and paying the full market rate condo fee. But they can't have an affordable unit-
But that would be within their purview, not ours.
No, that would be the town. That's a suggestion from the Board of Selectmen.
That they release the-
That they need to rectify the mistake somehow, so that was the other option. There's really not a lot of options to fix the mistake.
If they take this, let me just try to, if they take the apartment and make it a full-blown thing, you lose that one off the 40B.
You'll lose two, you're going to lose two anyway. Because when they sell us affordable units, they'll automatically per market rate because the mark, the condo fee has gone up to almost $500.
A month?
A month. And there's no way that anybody in the income cap for affordable will make 38% of their income and make that condo fee. It's mathematically impossible.
If they can't change it without a vote, we haven't-
Well, the problem is the stipulation was never recorded with the deed of registry. This document, the eligibility letter, isn't a recorded document. It's a document the DHCD gave to you guys to create the comprehensive permit out of and all the different provisions that need to go in it. So that provision was never recorded, so it can't be enforced until it's re-admitted and recorded.
They can't, I don't believe, they can automatically come in and say, well, we had two affordable housing. And they just can't automatically give it full-blown status.
Well, it's discrimination anyway against me as a 40B unit owner because they're attacking my income source being the state-mandated deduction and fees.
Okay, what, the issue here, if, if she goes to sell her unit, for anybody to qualify under 40B, they can't expend more than 38% of their income on mortgage, HOA, insurance, utilities, all those added together. So what's going to end up happening is because they're jacked up the HOA fee, there's no way anybody can meet that requirement. So she's going to put her house on the market as a, as a 40B unit. Nobody's going to be able to buy it because nobody will be able to qualify. So eventually, after six months or whatever time, the time period is, it'll just get released from 40B and become a full market rate unit because there won't be any eligible 40B buyers.
But the problem is that that's completely unethical because I'm supposed to pay reduced fees. So for me to have to sell my unit as an affordable unit and then the town benefit off of the income of the difference in the market rate and affordable rate, they're not the one paying the full market rate fees that are supposed to be reduced. So that's like, unless they release the deed restrictions, that's not a solution to the issue.
Well, I wasn't suggesting it's a solution, I'm explaining to them what the problem is.
Right, right.
So we'll, we have to figure out-
That's definitely the problem.
Well, we have to work the problem first so that everybody understands it and then we can figure out what the solutions are. So, but we need to make sure everybody on the board here understands exactly what's going on.
Am I explaining it?
No, the problem is clear. What's not clear to me is what, what this document is because there's no-
That's because it's like 300 pages long and I didn't have the ink in my printer to print out 10 copies of that.
Yeah, no, so it just says, it just says lip.
So it, this comes from, the lip is the low income.
No, I know that, but it doesn't say if it's- No, I know that, but it doesn't say if it's from the developer.
That's the same as low-income.
It's the DHCD's guide to comprehensive permits.
So this is the guide? This is not what was recorded?
These pages, this, nothing was recorded. This eligibility letter that stapled together?
Into the books.
This right here?
This one?
Yep.
Well-
This is the provision that was overlooked.
Something had to be-
Back in 2004.
There had to be a comprehensive permit.
Right, I have the comprehensive permit.
I will.
But this provision here in the quotes-
We had counsel.
That was overlooked and was never recorded, so nobody can enforce it. So since January 1st, they've raised my rates from 350 to 482. Because they can. Because legally, right now, they have the right to do that. And they know that you, this provision exists. I gave them it. They, they just feel that because they can, they will. And it's wrong, it's unethical.
Okay, I'm looking for the provision under which we can reopen this permit.
Well, the DHCD has had a conference call with some of the Board of Selectmen, Pat Pegstone?
Pegstone, yeah.
It was me. Chris, hi.
Oh, was you?
Chris.
Oh, hi.
Hi.
Um, and they said that, what was I saying now? The DHCD had a conference call with them and they said that they were looking for the town to do something about it.
And we were, and we actually asked them, because they have an attorney on staff, why they couldn't do something about it rather than have us use our book counsel. And they refused.
I just don't know under what theory we could reopen the comprehensive permit.
I think we would have to get some kind of guidance on.
Legal, we need, we need, okay.
Yeah, I think we need to review the comprehensive permit again, but being that this would, this change would essentially, one way or another, eliminate the ability to have 40B in there, and that was the whole process to begin with.
They've been trying to push them out since the minute they took over the complex.
Okay, but would that, would this constitute a substantial change to the comprehensive permit that would, would trigger a review of the comprehensive permit?
I understand where you're coming from, and I think we're coming from the same place. We need legal guidance. Number one, we would need to know who and whether or not we could reopen the comprehensive permit. Okay? Chris, is this something that we could ask Amy or?
Yes, I, I'm guessing, yes, she would probably know.
This is something that's really, like, needs to happen quickly because I can't afford the extra money. I'm going to end up with a lien on my house and a foreclosure because of a mistake that I didn't make. And I've been, spent the last three months trying to fix it already.
When did they increase your?
One January.
Of 19?
Yes.
Yep.
I would have been here last year.
Because I think some of those things are important. Chris, could we have you talk to Amy about this and see? If I understand you, what you're looking for us to do is to amend the comprehensive permit.
To add the provision that was missed.
Okay. I don't know under what theory or who can do that, or if we can unilaterally do that. And I think that this is a legal question for Amy. And Chris, I'd appreciate it if you would converse with her about this. Specifically, what the ZBA can or cannot do, unilaterally.
I'm just curious why that hasn't happened already, because I sent emails in December to all sorts of boards, the zoning boards, the Board of Health, the Board of-
It would never have occurred to me that one of the remedies would be reopening the comprehensive permit, okay? And I think we need to find out, number one, if we can, and if we can, under what circumstances? Okay, because it requires a hearing and so forth if we deem that it is a significant change.
So are we saying the significant change is the, the new, the new monthly homeowner fees make it not, make any applicant non-compliant? In other words, their, for their income to be 30% for housing puts them out of the income requirement to qualify for 40B, therefore-
We have testimony that that's true. Again, this is something that we would have to verify, okay? But yes.
But I'm saying, to me, that sounds like a substantial change that the LIP program cannot be enacted.
I'm just looking for the theory under which we reopen it.
Well, I don't think there needs to be a substantial change because there is no change to the rules of the development. The development project eligibility always had this provision. The project always required this to happen. It was just not notated.
What, do you have a copy, and I think maybe we can get one from Ellie, of the original condo agreement?
The condo, what, the master deed?
No, the original condominium agreement, because that is used, well, it's supposed to be part of the comprehensive permit.
I have a copy of the permit.
Pass that down to Mel. This is what Ellie provided before that Jim had looked at.
That looks like the master deed.
Yeah, but it's-
Can I see your copy of the permit, please?
It's highlighted where it should be.
Yeah, I'm looking for other things.
There's also a highlight where it's incorrect. It's got the monitoring agent listed as a different agency.
The point that I'm making is, has the condominium, obviously you were for years paying at a lesser rate.
And now they've realized that nobody recorded the right information, so they're legally allowed to do what they're doing.
But what I'm saying is, part of the Whitney Estates condominium agreement originally was supposed to be part and parcel of the comprehensive permit. So, have they changed any rules?
They changed the condo fees to market rate prices.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Does the original condo-
The original master deed states that you pay your condo fees based on the square footage of the unit and the beneficial interest, which is in direct-
Opposition.
Exactly, to what the provision states. Nobody, and, nobody reviewed the, the final, there's a, if you look at the paperwork that I pulled out of the guide, there's a page that states that the DHCD will review that exact provision. The DHCD will review the schedule of beneficial interest in the master deed to confirm that the LIP units have been assigned percentage interest in the condominium that corresponds to the approved condominium fees. I think the reason that that never got caught is because, you remember, my father was on the board back then. I remember him saying at one point, they want to reduce the rates for the fees, but they do not want to take away their voting rights. So they probably left the beneficial interest the way it was, so that everybody had the same rights, because the units are all pretty much the same size.
Okay. I think we know what the problem is, and I don't want it, you know, Leanne will tell you I have a way of confiscating these things and they disappear. I think we need, and if, Chris, if you're willing to do it, I think we need to have Amy tell us what we can do.
Well, maybe we could do a conference call with Amy, with yourself and Jim, if you want, because you-
Sure.
Do you mind if I would be included on that, seeing as I'm selling out extra money every month?
I think if you want to listen in and if you want to come, like, to the town hall, if that's one of the places, I think, fine. But I think as far as participating, other than if we ask you for clarification, that it would be difficult.
That's fine. I, I think I should know what's going on, though.
I think that's great.
$150 a month extra.
I think what we, what we could do is whenever you can arrange this call, and maybe we take it at the town hall.
Can all this happen before the 21st? Because when I spoke with Jim this past weekend, he said that he would be willing to come to the condo meeting on the 21st to discuss the situation. And they're telling the condominium owners that it's a big error. And I don't want to be opened up to 15 years of paying them the reduction in fees.
I, I understand, but I doubt as we're going to have a resolution, because even if the resolution is that we open up the comprehensive permit and include those things that may or may not have been missed, that's not going to happen without setting up a hearing and notifying.
Well, we may, maybe we can ask Amy if there's something we can do in the meantime. Perhaps send a letter to the association and-
Well, if Amy thinks it's strong enough-
Yeah.
If Amy thinks the case is strong enough, she could, she could write up an injunction and send that to them in time of cease and desist until it's clear, until it's resolved.
Right, so let's do that. We'll ask you if you would, Chris, set up for a phone call.
Do you have this?
And don't forget to take this with you.
No, I, that's mine.
Oh, that's yours? Oh, okay.
I don't want this whole packet.
This is the whole letter, you can have it. It's the whole eligibility on it.
This is what Eloise gave me.
Well, no, I mean, for Amy.
Yeah, that's what I sent her.
Would be, can a master deed be in conflict with a mass general law?
Okay. Why don't we set up the phone call? And when you have a date and time, Chris-
Why don't you let me know what dates you are available, whoever would like to be?
And what I, what I'm saying is, we open it up, anyone can attend, and we'll ask Leanne to post it as a meeting.
Okay, and if not, send in questions.
That would be, okay? That would be fine.
Do you have a copy of the old condo association rules where they calculated these numbers and the current? I, I see this letter that you got.
That's my new condo fee.
But this doesn't, well, this, this states what the fee is, but it doesn't show that they've changed anything in the, the calculations of how they're accomplishing, how they came up with these.
Well, I have that somewhere.
Because there is a provision in the comprehensive permit that says, "There shall be no amendments to provisions concerning affordable units or conditions set forth in this decision without board approval." So if they've changed the condo association rules for how the affordable units are calculated, then they-
No, they were just doing it wrong before. They were calculating them on a whim.
Well-
And now they're doing it according to-
If they've been doing it for 15 years, I think we could make a pretty good legal argument that they had accepted that as the terms of their-
I have documents in here that state their 70-30 rule in their, on their letterhead.
So obviously, if they were abiding by it, and now they're not-
That's practice.
That's, I mean, if they were doing it for 15, I mean, if they did it for six months and said, oops, we made a mistake, I'd say, okay, you made a mistake. But 15 years?
How's your dad doing?
He's doing good, he's golfing, living the good life.
Who's that? Who's golfing?
My dad. He was on the zoning board of appeals for 40 years.
Oh, who is he?
Larry McDonald.
Oh, yeah.
From Allen Road?
Mm-hmm.
I think he misses it.
I know he does.
He only moves like a mile away.
He walked out of town and then he said, can I still be on the board?
Well, he owns like 40 acres of land in Berlin.
Okay. If I could, we sympathize- We sympathize with you and let us do what we can do to help you. But we need to find out what that is. Jim, you seem to have your teeth deeply sunk into this, so.
Do you need a copy of that?
Follow an email, if I can just print out the headlines.
We will set up a conference call, and we'll set up a call from the town hall. Jim, is there any time you're not available?
Well, I usually sleep between 11:00 PM and 8:00 AM.
We weren't planning on having a call at 3:00 in the morning.
Other than that, I think I might have-
Okay.
This is actually what they-
The only problem I have is a luncheon on the 25th.
Somebody knew they were doing things wrong on the board, and you guys had to reinstate it. So this is going, been going on for years.
And Friday the 1st, Ma's is having good legislative breakfast, so I can't do that in the morning.
They'll have meetings without me. Like they hired the lawyer, but I don't even have a vote on it.
And I think this right here gives us a-
Something to sync up teeth into.
Well, it gives us a reason to go back to them and say-
I highlighted that because that's why I think the beneficial interest was left the way it was.
Yeah, I don't think the beneficial interests are concerned. I'm concerned with the paragraph underneath that that says that they won't make any amendments.
Okay, Jim, why don't we do this? Why don't you work, work with Becky, if I may call you Becky?
Yeah.
And put together a couple of pieces of paper that Chris could back over to Amy so she knows what we're talking about, those points that you wish to bring up. And we can set up-
I can send Amy some information because we had set up, I think I was telling you that we set up a presentation for March 6th at 7:00 PM for her to come in and talk about how to keep our 40Bs. And so I could send her some things, but if you could send me whatever else you might want her to have.
I'll scan these in and send them over to you.
Sure.
This one's probably not that relevant.
Yeah. I'll go through.
Just shows ongoing issue.
Okay.
So we will do what we can.
All right.
But like I said-
So when should I hear about the conference call?
We can, I mean, we can email, you have your email.
Yeah, the, you know, Chris will see that you get an email, what you know about the conference call. And again, you're welcome to attend.
Yeah, I just want to know what they plan on doing, because, like, I need to know whether I need to vote my house off to sale.
Would be sorry to, would be sorry to miss you.
I want to keep my kid in the school, so it would be nice to have the stipulation enforced.
Well, you could always get an attorney to get an injunction for you on here, but I-
I'm a single mother, I'm living in a 40B condo. You think I have money for an attorney to get an injunction?
Well, if you can find one, you can find one.
Okay, let's see if we can, we can find a solution. So you'll work with Jim.
Yep.
The paperwork, you'll get it to Chris so she can back it over what, what we think may be pertinent, and we'll have a call. When you decide what date the call can be, you let Leanne know, she'll send us out a note just saying when it is. If it appears that there's going to be more than two of us there, then we need to post, okay? Okay, guys. Thank you, Becky.
Thank you. If you need any other paperwork, just call me, whatever.
Okay, I had a couple of things I wanted to mention to you, just as a point of-
Jim, did you read about the deed writer, like a low in, a low, moderate income? There should be a deed writer that she had to sign.
Yeah, I haven't seen what that deed writer actually says.
No, I know, I'm just saying, were you aware that there is one?
Well, there is on all the 40Bs, yeah.
Yeah, but, okay, I didn't know. Be good to see.
Okay, let's see what junk I have for you guys. All right. I had a phone call from a gentleman named Benedict on Gates Wind Road. He's building- He's building a home off of Sawyer Hill Road. I think it's Bergen's property that they, the subdivision. And he wants an in-law apartment. I also had a call from his realtor. I told him I can't, and you know, I always say, "I can't speak for the board." I told him the first line of contact is with our building inspector, that the building inspector needs to tell him what he needs.
Yep, I've had numerous conversations and he's been in twice to see me.
Okay, so basically, I referred him to the building inspector. We will be glad to hear anything that he may need. CPTC training is March 16th. It's up, I don't know if we've gotten anything in the mail yet, have we?
Got emails from them.
I haven't. But this is just a copy of what's at the conference. I'd love to see everybody go, maybe we could capo like last time, Jimmy?
Okay.
Sue, do you think you could go?
I cannot because this is always held when I'm working away from home.
Okay.
Just as a, I called CPTC the other day when I got my little email from them mentioning the thing. And I asked them for a copy of my transcripts of the sessions I've taken before. Still haven't gotten them. You're supposed to email them, email them last week. But, but I, you know, mentioned that, you know, I've gone to a couple of these spring annual conferences and have yet to get any certifications out of them. And apparently, they're operating on like five different computer systems, so they don't have any way of knowing when somebody has completed all the requirements for a certification unless you call them up and ask them to look up here.
Right, they put the onus on you.
Yeah, and then they don't respond to you when you do call them. So, you know...
What certification are you seeking, Jim?
Well, they have a Level 1 and a Level 2 certifications there along with the M-I-I-A-B-C-W-Q, whatever thing they have.
X-Y-Z?
Yeah, municipal, something for insurance, I don't know what it is.
M-I-I-A, MIA?
Yeah. So, I mean, I think I have all the requirements for the Level 1 and Level 2, but they've never said anything. So I don't know if the town is aware of that and if the town is getting any sort of insurance break that we're supposed at least going to these classes to get.
I'll tell you what, Jim, what you need to do is, at our next meeting, why don't you explain to us what the different classifications are and what we can do? And then those of us that are attending may not be just certifiable, but will be certified. Would you do that?
Yeah, I can, I mean, it's in there.
The other thing is, so are you planning to go on the 13th?
I don't know, I don't, at this point, I'm not sure if there's any benefit to me going because it looks like I've already taken all the seminars that...
They have?
They're basically offering.
Okay. Well, some of them get renewed. I mean, Chapter 40B is always a kick. They always have something different. I'll just suggest to you folks that if you're going, let's see, our next meeting will be before that, it'll be the 13th of March. It's up to you folks to register, you can register online. And it's M-A-S-S-C-P-T-C dot org. And then you can go through, they have a list of the different classes they have and you can go ahead and register for them. It's still $75, we ask you to pay that upfront and then we'll hand them over to Denny. She'll get reimbursement for it. Okay. We met with River Rock West. Everybody understands the part-time wages that we're asking the PINCOM for, correct? And I just wanted to mention to you folks, it may seem strange that I send stuff to Leanne and I don't send it out to everybody and there's a reason for it. Because Leanne sends it out to you. You can respond to Leanne, but we can't talk about anything that I send you because that would be in violation of the open meeting law. So please, if you have comments on something, which fortunately, everybody hasn't seemed to have had, but if you send it back, just send it back to Leanne alone, okay? Like if it's minutes or anything else like that. Because it's a violation of open meeting law if we start talking back and forth about anything that's in it. And the one other thing I have here is the town clerk just gave me, and I have actually conversed with her, and I think you may, you folks may have seen this, but one of the, I was going to say tenant, but owners up at Village Court, up at Sawyer Hill LLC, is requesting an in-law apartment in the basement of their house up there. So I don't know if this includes the building inspector. I have a letter here from you, do you wish to speak to it or...
Which address was that again?
This is...
51 Village Court.
51 Village Court.
Yeah, so, yeah, I can speak to that. So 51 Village Court, we responded with the fire department, there was a fire alarm that went off. So they responded, they called me up, they took a look at things. They put in a basement apartment into that unit. All the documentation when they were building out that unit for the basement had, Larry had put on there, not to be utilized as an apartment, not to have cooking equipment, not to have kitchen, a whole bunch of stipulations. Even some of the documentation that they had signed looking for apartments was put in an in-law apartment. When they were told that they couldn't have an in-law apartment, they changed it just saying, "We're renovating basement." So when I responded to the call, came in, went in, they had built out, of course, the basement into an apartment. They were blocking sprinkler heads, smoke detectors, they were blocking the fire panel, the sprinkler, everything. So what I did is I put a cease and desist on utilizing it as an in-law apartment, even though it is allowed in the zone because it's in our zone, but it's part of a comprehensive permit. Based on the information that I had read, the comprehensive permit stipulated that it needed to remain in perpetuity, that there couldn't be bedrooms added and things like that. They went out and talked to the DHCD and got a letter from them stating that it can be amended through the ZVA. So I said to them, "If you want to pursue going through the ZVA to get it amended so that you can have this apartment because it's allowed by a special permit in your zone, I don't have a problem with that."
Are you saying that they need an amendment to the comprehensive permit?
They do.
Then we can entertain this request. But we need something from you. Because you get these, this is an application for an in-law apartment. And we need a letter from you. You say here that, you know, the certificate of occupancy and everything, but saying that prior to getting any in-law apartment, you would need a modification of the comprehensive permit.
And I did tell them that, they said that, according to the applicant, and I haven't met with them, and so I talked to them last week, but they haven't submitted anything yet, so this must be brand new. But I told them that they had to come forth and get that amended first before they can just get a special permit. So I did tell them that had to be taken care of first.
In writing?
Yeah, they have an enforcement letter and everything from me that...
Yeah, there's an enforcement letter here with their application, but they're looking for...
I wonder how many more there are up there.
Oh, we just need to send the fire department up there more often.
Is that the Eco Village?
Yeah.
Is that what?
Eco Village.
Yeah, that's Sawyer Hill LLC up on top of the hill there. Okay, I think we need a letter from you saying that we need a modification of the comprehensive permit. And that that would have to be done by the association. Because when Ellie asked me, I said, "Well, first of all, we have," I said, she was wondering about the fee to charge them. And I said, "Well, this is an individual, so it's $50 as opposed to the $500 if it's the condo association." But I also put in there, I think you saw that, Leanne, maybe forwarded it to the others, that it would have, it'd have to show that it doesn't violate any of the original condominium agreement or rules and regulations of the condominium association. And I think there's two of them because it's two levels.
So, let me back up because this whole thing's been going on for months.
Is this one of the 40B units?
Yes, it is.
So it's a 40B unit?
It is a 40B unit.
And to do the improvement, then, then, I mean, you would most likely not be 40B or whatever, is that correct?
Right, yeah, and this is everything that had been going on and I explained that to them. This is, this is new for me, having to deal with something like this.
It's a little new to us too.
So I've been trying to work out, with the letter, I don't know if she included the letter in there from the DHCD, but it said that...
Last page.
He reads everything.
It's a little normalized, like it can be done, but the comprehensive permit would have to be amended through the local board or something along that lines.
Because the Department of Housing and Community Development is not a party to the comprehensive permit, we do not get involved in matters related to an application for an amendment to the permit. All this says right here, yeah.
We're simply losing another 40B.
Well, they just asked for one of the smoke walls there already.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Not a patent.
No, but we converted 40Bs into radio things.
Any unit that has done that, because previously, a year prior to this, there was a fire up there. Apartment had been made into one of the additional bedrooms, or, sorry, it was added to the basement and a hole was cut through a firewall into another unit to make that a bedroom to be included in another unit. However, that was not allowed, but had been signed off by the previous building inspector. Because of that, my hands were tied. However, I have a feeling that that may be a typical in that development of those types of things. And I have a feeling, however this works out, maybe side chain reaction of some sort. Whether that does kinds of fruition or not, I don't know. But this is, this is a whole new realm for me.
It's for us to...
It's got a firewall up, that's up to the fire department to...
We have a letter from the Department of Housing...
They got a building permit to, they were given a building permit for modifications of a different apartment. When I went to that fire call, they had been given a building permit from the previous building inspector to do the modifications. And that was done through the building code and signed off on that end, which should have never been allowed. Like you can't cut through firewalls into another unit and just leave it wide open.
That's what I'm saying, even if it's signed off, that's jeopardizing...
Safety.
I tried to enforce that.
Okay, I think we need a decision from you, given the Department of Housing and Community Development themselves say that they need a modification.
Right.
And I think what we should probably do is refuse this and say, and again, it's up to you guys, but refuse the application saying that prior to accepting this application, there would need to be a modification to the comprehensive permit.
Yeah, I mean, we could just tell them, you can submit it, but we have to disapprove it until the comprehensive permit is modified.
So what I will do then tomorrow, based off of this conversation, is I will draft a letter and that letter will be identical when I send the letter to the board and I will send the letter to the applicant. And it's going to basically say that they need to...
And the condo association.
Well, I'll do the condo association as well. And it's going to say that they need to have a modification to the 40B comprehensive permit, application to that, this special permit.
And I'd attach the Department of Housing and Community Development's letter because that's backing everything that you say.
Yeah.
I want to think at one point in time, I don't know where it's written, but I thought they reserve the right to go in and check these every now and then.
I don't, I don't know who would do that. I don't, I definitely know it's not under my perp.
Right, I just, I think it was, I've dealt with that match before on, when they were building that thing. And...
Because I've, I've heard of several, unless I have cause for anything such as a fire call, you know, which is in the two cases that have actually been in units up there were due to fire calls and being called in from the fire department for safety reasons. I've heard that there's a number of homes up there with accessory apartments in attics, basements, things like that, bedrooms that have been added.
You can see my crag just.
And I want to think back then, I was the rescue chief and I was fighting just what's going on up there, that they would be adding more bedrooms and nobody would know how many people are in this place. And if the egress from different floors, some of them places to get up to the second floor was touch and go.
Yeah, like for example, in this apartment here, and why I put the cease and desist on it, the individual that's staying there, is they put the, the electrical meter is inside the apartment, in the stairwell. And there is no sprinkler head in that stairwell because they put a door at the bottom of the stairs of a landing that's there. And then they blocked other things. So there was a number of things.
Yeah.
I gave them a deadline on which to be out. I've been working with them because of financial hardships. I don't want to put anybody out in the cold in the winter, you know?
It's going to warm up this weekend.
Hmm?
It's going to warm up this weekend.
I told them if they could get through the ZVA portion, that I would hold off on full enforcement. So that's something I'm going to have to look at now, seeing that they're not going to get into the March meeting.
Okay, then maybe what we do is, Leanne, the address is on here, could you send a note to this woman and just say, "The board will gladly schedule you for a March meeting date, but we would not be able to approve the petition until there is a change in the original comprehensive permit." Does that seem reasonable?
Yes, I'd like to ask you one more question.
Sure.
Sure, septic system up there, right?
Yes, yep.
And there's a maximum number of bedrooms?
Sized by bedrooms.
Right.
Yes, yeah, properly loaded.
So...
And I had something to the Board of Health on that. And the Board of Health actually is off of that because it's state regulated, just like the facility that's going to be where the apartments are. That's done by the state because it's a treatment facility rather than just a septic system.
But is it sized large enough to even allow another bedroom to be put in the complex?
That is information I did not have.
It probably is, but I don't think we get into, that's up to the Board of Health to state.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, but, you know, if they're going to put this in, that's going to be one of the big questions is, I'm going to ask is, does the septic system...
Well, one of the things when you ask for an in-law apartment is a septic review. Okay, so I think that if we go, so you understand what I'm saying, Leanne, right? The email address is here and stuff. And I think that, and I'll have to mention to Ellie, that you also have to tell them time is of the essence if they want to go ahead with the hearing, they need to let us know within the next couple of days. Because we need to, I mean, this is a short month anyway. Before I confiscate it, you want to send this over to Leanne? Unbelievable.
The Eco Village, so people bought those places just for a
Lynn, just for what?
This is, this is Keith.
Okay.
Who was interested in possibly becoming a board member and may no longer be interested.
We didn't scare you off.
I'm here to help you, but you don't need my help.
Again, what was your name again?
Keith Soucy.
Spell the last name.
S-O-U-C-Y.
So we haven't scared you off.
I didn't say that. It seemed like you don't need much help, but I'm happy to help if you do.
We need a constant five-member board. Oftentimes, well, I think everybody here has been an associate at one point to another, but people roll over. And in fairness to those, the petition, we need five folks. Sometimes you have to recuse yourself because you may live next door or you're related to the person. So we really need extra folks all the time. Some people like to go hunting.
Go on vacation.
Evens.
So do you think you'd consider?
Oh, yeah. I'd love to help.
Oh, there's one of the selectmen. She can
So are you giving your agreement that you'd like for him to do?
How do you folks feel?
Are you kidding? He's a warm, black body.
He has a pulse. Yeah, check to make sure he has a pulse. All right, we'd love to have you on the board. You've come on as an associate member. We have five regular members. And right now, I think we just have one associate member.
Benny?
Is Sue.
Who's filling in for someone who's not here tonight.
Right.
And you filled out an application?
Yes. Okay, so we probably have them five. Let us know that the ZVA is approved.
Unanimously approved.
Great.
Yes.
Would you give your email to Leanne, just, you have it already?
She has it, yeah.
What's your password?
Nothing to do with this.
You can see the variety of things we deal with?
Tonight it was 40B.
And it's not a popularity contest.
Yeah, no.
We usually manage to make someone angry, don't we?
He told it, yeah.
Oh, whatever.
We'll keep the selectmen. We'll move along, I'm sure.
We will put it on an agenda probably Tuesday night to appoint.
And then you have to be sworn in by the town clerk, but fortunately, the town clerk will be around Wednesday night.
That's in writing someplace.
I have a number of documents that I went through on the comprehensive permit when this whole thing came up about that 51 Village Court. And it's the main reason why I wrote the cease and desist and, you know, the big eight. Was basically because of what it said in there and then all the documents that led up to it. They've been very adamant that they can do, because it's allowed in the zone. And I said, granted, it's allowed in NRA zone by special permit. However, under the comprehensive permit, it says that you can't be doing this. And underneath the condominium documents, it says you can't be doing this. You could be adding bedrooms and so forth. And then they went ahead to the state, and the state said that, you know, they have to have it amended through the 40B comprehensive permit, and then they moved forward with this. Which, again, is, I mean, I'm used to 40Bs, but this whole realm of something like this is new to me. This is the first time I've ever had
Very excited working with them. And they have a whole, it's a whole little city up there.
Yeah.
And I think you gotta go to town, it's gotta go to that little city and say, look, we want to inspect every house here because we feel that there is some something finally been going on.
Impropieties.
Yeah, okay, and it's risking life and limb.
Yeah, I mean, that would be something for town council. Town council said that was something that I could
Would be appropriate, yeah.
You know, yeah, that would be appropriate and that can be enforced and, you know, then we would seek that route, and that would be a wise thing to do in order to make sure, make sure everybody stays safe up there. Or wherever in town, you know, I think it was a similar situation. But it would have to come from town council as a director saying that it was something that could be done.
Well, there's other ways to skin the cat if it's just one rogue person, and that is either with whomever they have their mortgage or whoever is insuring them. Would be interesting knowledge. So okay, does anybody have anything else?
But that is a good point, though, because the insurance company does routinely come through. And they want to take a picture of the electric panel.
Well, it's not even the panel. It's direct meter to the property.
No, I know, but when the insurance company comes in, they just go over, they go to your panel, they take a picture of that, and then they take a picture of something else. Make sure you don't have a trampoline. What's the date?
Or a dog. Or a horse.
If you have a dog, yeah.
What's the date she's coming again?
March 6th.
Okay.
I think it's a Wednesday. And that might be a good question to ask Amy, you know, perhaps one of us can
Yeah, absolutely.
The selectmen found that they have a couple of training sessions a year as part of their legal package, correct?
Yes.
And they chose to do it on 40B. So Amy's coming out to do the training.
Very good choice.
Cutting into my dancing time, but I'll be glad.
You get a group of women together and they tend to find the things that can be done.
What time on Wednesday?
I believe it's seven o'clock.
At night, oh.
Yeah. Seven o'clock at night.
But again, let Leanne know, I know I'm planning on going and you're planning on going, aren't you?
I'd like to.
And you're gonna go? All right, you better post it.
The, um
The sixth?
March 6th.
Yeah, I think we've already posted, just in case all the selectmen come.
Posted because how many of us are going?
If three of us attend, you could make a case that it's a training session and you don't need to, okay? But it's always safer if there's gonna be three or more of us present. We post it as a joint meeting. And then there's no question that there was notice given, okay?
Yeah.
I mean, we won't have anything else to do. You're welcome to come. Just let Leanne know that you're coming, so be sure to get a little sign for you. I'm new, you know?
Rookie of the bullseye.
You learn a lot.
Yeah.
You do learn a lot.
Website.
And that
I saw the body.
I don't know if you made note of that. In fact, I could probably if you go out on
I already wrote that one down.
Okay, and take a look at the training. And we will pay for the training, okay? And you should be, we're gonna beg you quick. You should be a member by then. And take a look at the different, like they have it's at Hogan Center at Holy Cross. So it's not, and it's on a Saturday. And you have to pay the $75 upfront. Roles and responsibilities of planning boards and zoning boards of appeal part one and two. Site plan review. Designing for healthy community public health and planning. Overcoming common objections during planning processes. Open space and low-impact development.
You're gonna scare them all.
Housing guidance for municipals, Chapter 40B, local initiative programs, LIP, and local action units. So there's a bunch of different things. They do a very nice job. They have coffee and lunch and hope you're able to go. And we usually try to counsel. So if you let Leanne know you're going, how much room you got in your vehicle there? Jenny?
Well, I can fit 12 dogs.
And a horse.
I bring my trailer.
Well, I was just gonna say.
I can fit six people.
I don't think
It's three seats, but I've got four
Jumper seats?
Yeah, those things.
And a roof rack.
And a horse trailer.
A sunroof.
There goes ZVA.
Do you go to any of these things?
Yes, I do.
Good. You gonna go that Saturday?
I don't think I'll make it to that one. I usually do.
It's a good thing. Okay, do we have anything else?
No, just planning board left us these plans for Peach Hill Road Development, Mark Rhodes.
There's six slots. I thought there were five.
Well, there's five on the sub-development, but this is an A and R lot. This is to keep him busy until he can do
Cakes of Berlin.
Cakes of Berlin. To keep his crew packing.
The swap fell through, did it not, or is it still?
I have not gotten ahold of them in the last couple of weeks. But I do intend to. It's not over yet.
Okay.
No, it's not. I thought there was.
No, no, I need that particular one, but I'm just trying to see what else.
Oh, something else possibly would fancy him.
Yes, perhaps.
Now, you can tell us a little about you so we'll be comfortable with you.
He did.
How long have you lived in Berlin?
Not long. We moved here in October. We bought the old Silver Buffalo place. I'm sure you know Joe.
Oh, you're my neighbor.
Oh, yeah. That's a good thing. Which, which side were you?
No, I'm actually on West Street. We're the
Next to the church.
Next to the church.
Oh, sure. Lovely place. We share the pheasants. We go back and forth between us.
Oh, didn't we have, they were walking. Well, they stopped. And they were walking back and forth, males and females.
Yeah, they pretty much live in our front yard, but I have seen one. You're a lovely property.
Oh, thank you.
My mom didn't know those questions were real.
Yeah.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn and we can check?
Still moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, you're dead? We'll see you, we'll see you on either the sixth
or the conference call maybe? The conference call.